Welcome, everyone. This regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee will now come to order at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 24th, 2018. Please note that this meeting is being both video and audio recorded, and has anyone in the audience reporting this meeting? So now we'll move on to some administrative notes before we begin. Superintendent Kazas is out this evening, and good news, Juliette came into the world last Wednesday evening at 11:00 PM. So she's taking time off as deserved to be with her family. As such, we need a secretary appointed for the interim this evening. So remember, please make the motion to appoint Assistant Superintendent Valkoski for the evening.
Senator.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to appoint Melissa for tonight's secretary. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. And now all who are able, please stand before the committee.
(Inaudible)
Okay, thank you, Joey.
Mr. Chairman of the School Committee, I'm here to talk about my experience at Neskis National School. I feel that you guys have somewhat accepted what my parents have said, so I figured it would be easier accepted by hearing from the target of these recent events. On April 2nd, I was punched in the cafeteria, and when I immediately was called for, called for with my family and the administration, it was after the fact that my parents punched me against the administration to take action, since this student had been bullying me for a long enough. And I have reported it, but no action was taken. On the form the administration had filled out, had filled out that a, it was a pun, but they called it a touch. After arguing, they changed it to unwanted physical contact. When the administration tried to create a support plan for me, my parents were giving me the update. I believe that the administration should have done so as well. The next day, I brought in a support plan that I created based off of what I thought was a good support plan for myself. One of my biggest issues was that the student was in three out of seven of my classes. I brought that to the administration's attention, but they turned it down almost immediately. They said that either I'd be switched to gold, in which I moved from over summer to do the bullying, or nothing would happen. My teacher in one of those classes saw how uncomfortable I was with him in the class, and she brought it to the administration and got a change. Got my time at CPRSC, and I have been bullied, and no one has ever taken it seriously. This year has been the worst of them all by far. The administration, the administrator at Neskis requested me to write a letter to the student who punched me, so he could, quote, "see the pain I've been going through." At this point, I had made a very clear that I want no contact with the bully. I have filled out about seven to 10 bullying incidents just in this year alone, and this was the only one taken somewhat seriously. The administration told us that my support plan was going to be spread to the teachers, but just the other week, I went to eat lunch in Mr. Hoag's room, as it clearly states that I can do so on my support plan, but due to the fact that it wasn't, that it was not spread to my teachers, it got written up for being, quote, "rude and disrespectful", when all I was doing was standing up for my support plan. When I went to the administration to try to get it removed from my file, they said that it couldn't be removed when they, when they didn't notify my teachers. My grades have suffered due to this incident. I had to notify my teachers of the incident and the support plan. The feeling is that school isn't a safe location for me anymore, and the only thing's keeping me there is a few staff members, Mr. Hoag, my district teacher, Mrs. Tomer, my science teacher, Mr. Demo, my Spanish teacher, Ms. Morrison, my gym teacher, Mrs. Garcia, my band teacher, Ms. Gillespie, my chorus teacher, and my good friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. It's very great to come forward like that. I really appreciate it. Just a question, I trust, much of this is rectified to your satisfaction, or where do we stand? Because you came before the committee a while ago.
It's somewhat getting better, but I'm, like, it's kind of all like a vague blur stuff. Like, it's not clear, in my opinion.
And I'll add to that. Joe Diver, 51, I'll be right back. I think some of the steps have been taken recently, and in the right direction. I think that there's still behavior issues to be addressed along the way, but I think we've had enough awareness now to this committee, as the membership parents of administration, that we're taking the next step. Some of the policy changes that occurred, such as the yellow intake form, where students wouldn't use their word bullying, if that should change that, that they feel that they should have to check off, that they feel like they're being bullied. I also think that the definition of bullying, the legal definition, is pretty clear. However, the way it's interpreted is not clear. You know, that the child, you know, targets students multiple times, each time seen as a separate incident, whereas it should be seen as a totality. So I think some of that education, understand what that rule means, and how the children can then advocate themselves, and the parents are fair and true as well. I would say that, as a parent, I learned a lot about those terms and definitions going through this process that weren't clear to me a couple of years ago. So I think some of those steps are very, very positive, in the right direction. And just when Mr. David Summergrad was here doing the consultant surveys, I had the time to sit down and chat with him. So I really appreciate that. We had a great conversation. Sean, you've been very supportive of this, going back and forth. We have some areas where we agree and disagree, but, you know, we walk through it, and I learn more, and we share that going back and forth. So that's another great step in the right direction. I think the experiences Joey has, we want them, you're not hearing it from anyone else. You may have seen me on the Twitter feed, over a couple of days, trying to get more folks to talk about it, because parents, after parents, after parents were talking to you, talking about the same issues. So just more awareness and structure by taking where we're there. With all that said, the education the children are receiving is top-notch. There's no other way we want our children to be taught. So folks, I mean, if you're watching us that are outside of CPRSC, that are considering coming here, the education is top-notch, and I think everyone has awareness to take care of these issues as we move forward. So thank you for your time, and, you know, looking forward to a long, continuing career in high school, and two new years in middle school. No, they're good. She's going 21, so that's it. But we're going to support you as well. So anything that we can do differently, or any way that we can engage other parents to share, I mentioned to Sean the other day, that'd be great, appointing committee members with a parent liaison. If the parent wasn't having their issues addressed or heard, it'd be great to turn to a committee member and have a conversation, because you know the rules better than we do, and you can help guide parents through the process, making sure that actions are addressed. So again, thank you for your time, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
First of all, Joey, I'd just like to thank you for coming forward before the committee. But you made a statement that you still do not feel that you're safe at school. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And, you know, I want to assure you that I think everyone in this room is, you know, sad that you went through this experience, and I would hope that we could all work forward to try to make it so that you do feel safe in school, because every child should feel safe in school. And I just want to thank you for coming forward.
Again, Superintendent Kazas is not here to respond to some of the remarks, but we are expecting to hear back from Mr. Summergrad sometime next month, and the Superintendent did promise to have an action plan from the end of June, so I guess we're going to wait to hear what that results in. Leslie, Aaron, did you want to make any comments to that before you run? You know, I'm not trying to be on the spot, but if you can add...
It's my understanding that Mr. Summergrad's going to be getting back to everybody early June, and that's about all I know at this point, being at the high school.
All right. Very good. Is that, is that complete? All the responses from the audience? Okay. We'll move on to student affairs. We have with us this evening our rep for next year, Hannah Perrow. Hannah, welcome. She's eager to get involved in the process, so she's going to have to report to us.
Well, I just wanted to start by saying I'm very excited to be the newest student representative, and I look forward to sharing everything that's going on at school with you guys. So last Friday was the annual CRA buddy games, and they were called the Wakona. It was a great event. I wasn't able to attend, but from what I've heard from all my friends, it was a lot of fun. Last Friday was the last day of classes for the seniors, and today was our last day of finals. And now the junior class is preparing to host senior assembly, which will be held on June 1st. The seniors' graduation will be held on June 3rd. This past Tuesday, they were able to get a track team travel to Holyoke and won the Western Mass Division One title, which I'm very excited about. The team has done really great this season, and I'm very glad that we were able to add this team to our squad. And in upcoming news, the National Honor Society will be holding a face painting booth at the Dalton Carnival from June 6th to June 10th to raise money for our organization. And on June 14th, Wakona's band and chorus will be holding their final concert of the year in the auditorium.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Hannah?
Thank you.
Good job from the first time. Okay, moving on. Will a member please make the motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of May 10th?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 10th.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 10th. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-43-D, dated May 25th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $796,161.29.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-43, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2018-46-D, dated May 17th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $1,297.48.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-46-Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, motion carries.
End of the warrants.
Thank you. Under financial report, we have gifts and donations. Will a member please make a motion for the donation for the Wakona Senior Assembly?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $750 to benefit the Wakona Seniors Assembly, memory of Justin Farrell, from Bob and Dee Farrell.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve a donation for Wakona Senior Assembly. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, motion carries.
Next, under financial report, is we have a motion for authorization for treasurer to borrow money in fiscal year 2019. Will a member please make the motion? Be it resolved that District Treasurer is hereby authorized under provisions of General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16G, as amended by Chapter 134 of the Acts of 1972, and with the approval of the Chair of the District Committee, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and issue a note or notes therefore, payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17.
We have a motion in a second for the authorization for the treasurer to borrow money. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, motion carries.
Paying out of the report of the Chair, we still have the town of Washington School Committee vacancy. Town meeting report, we had six out of the seven towns approving the budget. The only one that rejected it was Covington, but Detective Dalton, Kingsdale, through Washington, and those are all approved. Superintendent Evaluation, we covered that at the last meeting in terms of the form and how to fill it out, and I also noted that the chair needs the forms back by June 15th, either on paper or electronically, it doesn't matter. One thing I do want to know is that we're going to do something a little bit different this year. I will tally up all of the, all of the grades, if you will, and the remarks, then hand them over to the Personnel Subcommittee, who's going to go through it and try to compile it somewhat, maybe have some general remarks about what was provided, and also make a recommendation for the ultimate evaluation. Want to try something different this year? I think it's more appropriate that it's presented to Personnel, discussed with Mr. Lacatelle. He's been, so Mr. Lacatelle already has been planned for 2018, I believe, and I'll also be present at that. Coming from Status, you all should have seen a copy of the letter, hopefully most recently received from Kip Sears. I don't know. I don't think everybody got the letter from Kip Sears.
Okay. I'll make sure that's forwarded.
I can print out some water, too.
I think just sending it out after five, and Mr. Lacatelle, we're going to have to discuss this a little bit.
Sure.
Well, just to preface this, we already had one, one letter that you've already received and read, indicating that they didn't want to proceed any further. I'll try to help you out a little bit. Subsequently, I had spoken with Kip to try to say he may be still interested in moving forward, despite the fact that we didn't get any response back from the Department. And Attorney Ducrey spoke with the Attorney Doctor, and basically, it's still, they don't have any response to that. Attorney Ducrey recommended that we continue to try to urge them, but I don't know how much purpose this is going to go. It's difficult in the sessions that we've had with some of the members of the committee representing Covington. It's not really been focused effort in trying to come to some compromise. It's been more, come to the meeting, and it's been more of an emotional theater, I guess, if you will, that this is what we are, brought to us, and it's not getting us anywhere, so we need to come to some solution. And I think the recommendation, our attorney has a couple of recommendations. It's first let up one committee member, sit down with Mr. Sears from Covington, try to come to some compromise. Another thing that's been suggested is that we engage Desi to help act as a mediator between the town and the district. What was the third choice?
Those two, only two were mentioned. The other is simply to drop it, and go, go dormant.
So we spent a lot of time with this, trying to move along, and it disappears for a while, and then a couple of months later, up to a half a year later, we go back. So I, at some point, we're going to have to decide, continue or stop.
I wanted to take this opportunity to not really address the issue at hand, but respond to some of the remarks that we hear and we get in letters. Often, the prior school committee that decided to close Berkshire Trail is disparaged, and I think fewer than half of us were on that committee, so we're being blamed for something that is perceived to be a problem that happened four years ago. And also, the terminology that is used by some of the members of Covington is very discouraging in the ears and almost all of the correspondents, one of them. The most recent was it said that the low percentage of the OPEB was a consequence of the committee's closing the school, which lowered the OPEB liability, which, quote, "is the district's burden to bear," which I did kind of find insulting. I mean, what people may not understand on this committee and in the public is for over a decade, prior to the closing of Berkshire Trail, this committee went to all sorts of extremes to try and keep that school viable. And I talked to Gary Sturgis, who some of you know, he was instrumental in the committee at that time, and he feels the same way, and he was really upset with what he heard what was happening and how we were being blamed. But some of the things that we did in the 10 years prior to actually closing the school, I wanted to list and show you. We made that school an innovation school, which costs about $30,000 a year, and we made Berkshire, I mean Beckett-Washington, an innovation school at the same time, and there it costs about $3,000 a year. We got absolutely nothing from Berkshire Trail, and we've gotten quite a bit from Beckett-Washington. We were blamed on one occasion, for multiple occasions, for terminating the preschool at Berkshire Trail after we had closed it. We're blamed for that, and at that time, I can't remember what the statistics were, but that was being subsidized by Beckett grant money. And we were servicing, as I recall, about four children, one day a week, something like that, and numerous children from other towns, but it just simply wasn't viable. But we tried it for two years. That school had fewer than 100 students at the time, and we tried to save money because it was costing us a lot per child. One of the things, the answer was always no. You had to give them exactly what they wanted. One of them was a full-time nurse. You know, with only 100 students, while we had 400, 500 at Craneville, why do you need a full-time nurse at Beckett Washington, Berkshire Trail, excuse me, and a full-time nurse at Craneville? Can't we reduce that? No, we had to have a full-time nurse. At one time, we had to supply a para that no other elementary school in the district had, but we had to keep a para there because the parents wanted it. The parents wanted, for a class of four second graders, they wanted one teacher. And I don't think we ever did that, but that's what we wanted. They didn't want to share a principal with another school, and they wouldn't consider multi-grading. You know, you have very small classes, where we had, say, 20 at Craneville, and multi-grading, we thought made sense. No, the people in Covington wouldn't stand for it. So the point is that it was not a capricious decision. It was thought about for quite a while, and we did the best we could. Having said that, where do we go from here? And Sean mentioned a couple of things that our attorney has suggested, and I don't have a solution to that. I don't know what we should do. But I do know that we've talked to Kip separately on several occasions, and the last time, last fall, I thought the whole thing was dead, and I thought Kip did as well, and then all of a sudden, in April or February, we got the letter that said, yeah, we want to meet, we want to do something, which was a shock to me. One of the problems is you get something from one part of the Covington community, and you talk to another group, and you get something else. And this happened at the last meeting that we had, where Jill did an excellent job in going through the calculation of OPEB, and we don't give her enough credit for that. We thought that was, at least the methodology was there, which differed on some of the parameters, but at least the methodology was there. In Kip's latest letter that we got, he just refutes that, doesn't agree with that at all, and says he has his own methodology that we should be following. So it's a very difficult environment, as Sean said. We don't know who to negotiate with. So where do we go from here? One thing is to just simply drop it. I think we've killed the one-on-one. I thought about getting a mediator, and we've done mediation quite a bit in labor negotiations. They tend to be knowledgeable in labor issues. I don't think that they are particularly knowledgeable in OPEB, and there are good mediators, some dead mediators. So I'm not, you know, we could try that, but I'm not particularly optimistic. Something else I thought we could do, we could create, there's another issue here. I mean, this is a lot of money we're asking from Covington, and it's not clear to me, even if they settle where we want them to be right now, it's not clear to me they can afford it. So that's a problem. They may vote that down simply because they can't afford it. So what do we do? Well, if I know who to talk to, and I don't, you know, it's Kip, he's a pristine doctor, he's a Jill, I'm not sure they're, they all know what, what the issues are. We could talk to them and try to meet their requirements or satisfy some of their needs while they're still a member of the Central Berkshire Regional School District. So we wouldn't have to go through OPEB and some of the other machinations that we have to do. And I think there are some things that we could do that, and I've talked this over with the finance community there. They want to be able to send all of their kids to one school. Maybe we could help them in that manner. But again, I don't know who to talk to. Another option would be, instead of a mediator, we could ask Covington if they would be willing to create independent panels, a panel that is somewhat familiar with school district finances, town finances, but could also understand OPEB and would research OPEB and create something that we could use in this instance, but use it in the future. In fact, I can think of some people to be great for that. I'm not sure that Covington would agree to that, but it wouldn't involve any of us. It would be independent. There would be a lot of work, but there are people around that, that could do that and are invested in this. So that's where I am. My, my principle is, first of all, that you can't allow a town to walk away from its debts. I mean, that's a, that's a disclaimer to anything any of us have ever learned. The calculation of debt should be researched and should be fair.
It disappears for a while and then a couple of months later, up to half a year later, we go back. So at some point, we're gonna have to decide, continue or do we stop?
I wanted to take this opportunity to not really address the issue at hand, but respond to some of the remarks that we hear and we get in letters. Often, the prior school committee that decided to close Berkshire Trail is disparaged. And I think fewer than half of us were on that committee. So we're being blamed for something that is perceived to be a problem that happened forty years ago. And also, the terminology that is used by some of the members of Covington is very discouraging and it appears in almost all of the correspondence, one of them. The most recent was it said that the low percentage of the OPEB was a consequence of the committee's closing the school, which lowered the OPEB liability, which quote, "is the district's burden to bear." Which I did kind of find insulting. I mean, what people may not understand on this committee and in the public is for over a decade, prior to the closing of Berkshire Trail, this committee went to all sorts of extremes to try and keep that school viable. And I've talked to Gary Sturgis, who some of you know, he was instrumental in the committee at that time. And he feels the same way. And he was really upset when he heard what was happening and how we were being blamed. But some of the things that we did in the ten years prior to actually closing the school, I wanted to list and show you. We made that school an innovation school, which costs about thirty thousand dollars a year. And we made Berkshire, I mean Beckett-Washington, an innovation school at the same time. And there it costs about three thousand dollars a year. We got absolutely nothing from Berkshire Trail, and we've gotten quite a bit from Beckett-Washington. We were blamed on one occasion, for multiple occasions, for terminating the preschool at Berkshire Trail after we had closed it. We're blamed for that. And at that time, I can't remember what the statistics were. But that was being subsidized by Beckett grant money. And we were servicing, as I recall, about four children, one day a week, something like that. And numerous children from other towns. But it just simply wasn't viable. But we tried it for two years. That school had fewer than a hundred students at the time, and we tried to save money because it was costing us a lot per child. One of the things, the answer was always no. You had to give them exactly what they wanted. One of them was a full-time nurse. And with only a hundred students, while we had four hundred, five hundred at Craneville, why do you need a full-time nurse at Beckett Washington, Berkshire Trail, excuse me, and a full-time nurse at Craneville? Can't we reduce that? No, we had to have a full-time nurse. At one time, we had to supply a para that no other elementary school in the district had. But we had to keep a para there because the parents wanted it. The parents wanted, for a class of four second graders, they wanted one teacher. And I don't think we ever did that, but that's what we wanted. They didn't want to share a principal with another school. And they wouldn't consider multi-grading. You know, you have very small classes, where we had, say, twenty at Craneville. And multi-grading, we thought, made sense. No, the people in Covington wouldn't stand for it. So the point is that it was not a capricious decision. It was thought about for quite a while, and we did the best we could. Having said that, where do we go from here? And Sean mentioned a couple of things that our attorney has suggested. And I don't have a solution to that. I don't know what we should do. But I do know that we've talked to Kip separately on several occasions. And the last time, last fall, I thought the whole thing was dead. And I thought Kip did his well. And then, all of a sudden, in April or February, we got the letter that said, yeah, we want to meet, we want to do something, which was a shock to me. One of the problems is you get something from one part of the Covington community, and you talk to another group, and you get something else. And this happened at the last meeting that we had, where Jill did an excellent job in going through the calculation of OPEB. And we don't give her enough credit for that. We thought that was, at least the methodology was there, which differed on some of the parameters. But at least the methodology was there. In Kip's latest letter that we got, he just refutes that. He doesn't agree with that at all. And says he has his own methodology that we should be following. So it's a very difficult environment, as Sean said. We don't know who to negotiate with. So where do we go from here? One thing is to just simply drop it. I think we've killed the one-on-one. I thought about getting a mediator. And we've done mediation quite a bit in labor negotiations. They tend to be knowledgeable in labor issues. I don't think that they are particularly knowledgeable in OPEB. And there are good mediators, some dead mediators. So I'm not, you know, we could try that, but I'm not particularly optimistic. Something else I thought we could do, we could create, there's another issue here. I mean, this is a lot of money we're asking from Covington. And it's not clear to me, even if they settle where we want them to be right now, it's not clear to me they can afford it. So that's a problem. They may vote that down simply because they can't afford it. So what do we do? Well, if I know who to talk to, and I don't, you know, it's Kip, it's Christine Doctor, it's Jill. I'm not sure they all know what the issues are. We could talk to them and try to meet their requirements or satisfy some of their needs while they're still a member of the Central Berkshire Regional School District. So we wouldn't have to go through OPEB and some of the other machinations that we have to do. And I think there are some things that we could do that. And I've talked this over with the finance committee there. They want to be able to send all of their kids to one school. Maybe we could help them in that manner. But again, I don't know who to talk to. Another option would be, instead of a mediator, we could ask Covington if they would be willing to create independent panels. A panel that is somewhat familiar with school district finances, town finances, but could also understand OPEB and would research OPEB and create something that we could use in this instant, but use it in the future. In fact, I can think of some people to be great for that. I'm not sure that Covington would agree to that. But it wouldn't involve any of us, it would be independent. There would be a lot of work, but there are people around that could do that and are invested in this. So that's where I am. My principle is, first of all, that you can't allow a town to walk away from its debts. I mean, that's a, that is covered anything any of us have ever learned. The calculation of debt should be researched and should be fair and realistic. And that's what we've tried to do. Whatever we come up with, or our panel comes up with, that's going to be a precedent that will be followed, not only in this district, but other districts. And it's a very important, what we do for Covington, we do for somebody else if that problem ever arose. And the thing that I've struggled with personally is, would I take a vote in the school committee, then vote a different way in my town? Am I gonna go to my town and say, yes, you ought to agree to this, but you're paying some of Covington's liability? Would I say that in Dalton? I couldn't do that. So consequently, I'm not gonna do that in the school committee, just to get it passed the school committee. Now, some others, you know, you face these ethical dilemmas every so often, and other people might do it. So that's where I'm at. If anybody else has any ideas or how to pursue some of those ideas, I certainly would be receptive.
So we're not looking for a decision in either a vote? We're just trying to put all this before the committee, we'll dissent the letter shortly and by mail if necessary? And just wanna have a discussion where we're going. Because this seems like for several years we've gotten a little, this result.
Yeah, you know, I was here through the closing of the school, and, you know, for those of you that were also here, I think you remember, I thought it was gut-wrenching, and I think everybody in the committee thought it was gut-wrenching. It was, despite all of the facts, despite all of the finances and all the other things that pointed in the direction that it was something that was, we needed to do in the district as people, we were, it was gut-wrenching. And we spent many, many hours in special meetings conveyed just for the town of Covington to come and talk with us and to exchange information. You know, personally, I don't feel like they were very well-attended until the very last meeting. I don't know, you know, if information could have came out that would have changed anything, but, you know, I want you to understand that the committee at the time, whether Covington believes it or not, it was a very difficult decision for all of us. And we did spend many, many, many hours on looking at every possible opportunity I think that we could at the time that we knew. And also, being on the finance committee for many, many years, you know, just to put into a nutshell what Dick, you know, has tried to articulate, we have this huge debt. Somewhat of a new debt, this OPEB, as far as when our regional agreement was first created, nobody was thinking about OPEB debt. It doesn't speak much to that type of thing in our agreement. But the debt does exist, and it's here, and, you know, we chose to close the school, the town chose to want to withdraw, the school committee has voted to allow the town to withdraw. So none of those things have changed. What we've been stuck on is, even from a finance perspective, and we have a lot of very intelligent folks on the finance committee, you know, we are not the actuarials, we are not the folks that come up with federal law and accounting. And all we have been able to do is to reach out to our accountants and actuarials and advisors and try to come up with what the right number should be, what would be fair, what's a starting point, those kinds of things. And things have changed over the last, it's been almost four years now, it's been at least a full three years. You know, so the numbers do bump around a little bit. We've asked things to be relooked at almost on an annual basis, and certainly more recently, we've, just up until, in the last sixty days, we had things relooked at, again, by a company who specializes in looking at these numbers and trying to make these predictions. And, you know, we, in our responsibility as school committee members to the entire district, we are setting a precedent in whatever we do. And it's been, as Sean said, the meetings, emotions have taken over at the meetings, and it's been very difficult, when those emotions arise, to make any progress or to get farther down the road, when things get so emotional for the folks from Covington. And I understand as parents where they are emotionally, and they want their kids to be able to do a lot and that kind of stuff. But I think at our last meeting, and OPEB is the biggest number, that liability is the biggest number, we were still something like a million dollars apart, from what our estimates were, what they were kind of making the offer to be. It was very difficult to get to understand why their number was where it was and why our number was. I think we can understand where our number came from, because we had experts giving us the number and supporting it. But the numbers can change, and you can pop in a different percentage here, and it shifts things around. But a million dollars is a huge amount of money. Dick's right, I don't know what the town of Covington would vote, and I certainly don't know what the other, what the other towns in the district would vote if, you know, if we said, okay, this number is what you want Covington, which I think is about five hundred thousand or something like that, yeah, we're gonna vote it forward. I would, I think we've all on finance committee, but I'll just speak for myself, I think we all are very doubtful that that would ever get passed in towns. Because we are setting that precedent, and then that, you know, those numbers are buried on the rest of the remaining six towns. So, you know, that's just my historical viewpoint. I'm still, I would like to keep the emotion out of it. I don't think that we had any FaceTime that was valuable because of it. And I thought that people didn't respect, started to lose respect for people as people and treated them in a way that, you know, I don't think anybody should have to apologize. So I would, I would be okay with a different group of folks meeting. I would be okay with, I think a mediator, a mediator might be a decent idea, just to see if the communication, taking the emotions out of the room, just having that one person communicating back and forth between groups. I have no idea where Covington feels about it. It's been the same, very small, two or three people that have been involved. That might be a possibility. We do have the option, as Dick said, we can just wait and see if anything more structured comes through from Covington. I think the other option was, you had mentioned, what I thought was also kind of a good one, was if they were at the MSBA, if there was a way for our DSC, like, could they help us work our way through this? I think we would entertain some other numbers if we had some understanding of, they were viable numbers. And I, you know, I don't think the number is so hard that we couldn't negotiate, but I know a million dollars of negotiation can happen. Just haven't seen anybody present to us, from a school committee perspective, that the number should be a lot lower than where it is. You know, there's legal avenues and other precedents yet to be established and those types of things. So we are unfortunately somewhat on the cutting edge in dealing with this. But I think all of those possibilities are viable, and I don't want to shut down the town of Covington or its folks. We did, you know, we did all vote that they should have the right to lead the district, so, you know, just so we're gonna get rid of Dick's that liability, that's where we're at.
Anything else? Okay, just clarification, the regional agreement does require that the town draws that pays paid all their debts. So it's not specifically knowing OPEB, but it does say all debts, so that's pretty clear. Just another point to add, when the school, when it was voted that the school be closed, it happened, I think, in the winter town, if I recall correctly. But right after that announcement was made, the administration and the school committee started working together to try to create a transition plan for the school, for the, you know, employees, for children, mostly for the children. We had to have a plan to close the school anyway and be out by, I think, by the end of August, point here. But there were a lot of, there was a lot of goodwill at the time. And Mr. Lockettall mentioned preschool, that was one of the things that we put forward. It was never asked for, it was an offering, and it was put into place. It went past one year, and things were okay with the second year, it was just very difficult with, you know, the low enrollment. It wasn't sustainable. But there was a lot of help with students transferring to other schools in the district. We even helped students who wanted to transfer to other schools outside of the district. A lot of the supplies that we had purchased over the years stayed in place in Covington. So, again, a lot of goodwill. It wasn't like we just let it go. We ceded, we tried to help until the end. Mr. Allen?
I've heard a couple of times, there was just said, well, just let it be and let it stay the way it is. Now, what is gonna happen when it comes time to vote for a new Wakona? You let it be, and they're still the seventh town, they're gonna incur more debt. And how are we gonna just, how are we gonna fix that? You know, I mean, we can't settle the debt we have with them now, and then we incur some more. I, you know, I don't know. Nobody's had to explain how that's gonna work out. If they, if we just let it stay, and they're still the seventh town, and they incur another debt due to that, what happens is...
Well, the debt for a new school or any capital project is fairly clear in the regional agreement, and it's done proportional to enrollment. So their enrollment is very small. If it went to zero, they would know of nothing on any capital project that starts. So the new Wakona, that won't be a big burden to them at all.
But I just wouldn't hate, I would hate to have this end up missing out.
And maybe you were, I don't know whether you meant it or not, but obviously, it would make a difference on a vote. But the last time you did feasibility, you said that you did it based on population. So that shouldn't be a big issue either, if we do it the same way.
Okay, moving on. Just noting one more time, the November election coming up, and receipts are going to be open at that time. And now we'll move on to subcommittee reports and recommendations. Curriculum first, Dr. Perez, please.
Thank you. Tonight, we met with April Lasey, very pleasure of meeting her tonight. And she sent us a very detailed, I quoted a book, about her trip to Costa Rica through the environmental science program. And while the dates are tentative, they're tentative because a day on either end could change the cost of airfare, so she's looking very carefully at what would be best for the students. But the dates she gave us were more or less a window, so somewhere within that timeframe. This is the fourth time she's, she will be going. She started in 2010, and in 2017, she was supposed to go, but because of the Zika virus, we canceled that. So they're very aware of any kind of risk for students, and they're paying tremendous attention to it. In terms of numbers of students, it could be anywhere from six students to twenty students. And assuming that it's twenty students, there would be a seven-to-one ratio of students to chathron. And so there would be three people going from the school, and then there are two tour guides and a bus driver. So there's six adults altogether. And they all travel together on the bus, and it's only Wakona that would be on the bus. So although there are other groups that are going, they would stay together. And if you looked at the schedule, there's no downtime to go hang out at the mall or anything like that. They're engaged all the time in environmental things, ecosystem things, and service activities. And we were all very impressed with that. ECO teaches, the group that runs it, and their mission is to support local, local systems. And the first two days were service work with endangered turtle species in Tortuga. And there was a community called Bree Bree, and it's kind of a community that's off the grid. And they learn a lot about cultural aspects. They work on a farm, and they pick their produce that they're going to be cooking for dinner. So there are a lot of wonderful activities that are embedded in this trip. In terms of the cost, it's quite costly, it's over two thousand dollars, nine thousand a trip airfare. I think your estimate's two thousand ninety-five plus air. And, but there are fundraising opportunities, and Berkshire to Kona Foundation has money available, and a grant, so April will be letting students know this. She said that sometimes children are aware of this field trip in their freshman year, and they start saving for it, so that by senior year, they have the money towards it. So that would be wonderful if that were the case. So our committee, our subcommittee, made a motion to approve the field trip to Costa Rica.
Second.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, here we go. I have it right here. We have resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, approve an overnight field trip for the Wakona students to Costa Rica, April eleventh through the twentieth, 2019, as recommended by the first given subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve an overnight field trip for Wakona students to Costa Rica, April eleventh through twenty, 2019. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, in the motion carries?
Thank you very much, April, for doing this.
Thank you. Love it.
And thanks for the great write-up. I failed to look at the print, the page count before I...
I know, yeah.
But it's wonderful information, though.
And cover all bases with that, so. I appreciate it. Thank you for providing the opportunity for us. It was an amazing trip.
My second wife, she had a terrific time. And I just wanna make sure you're cautioned in the last day not to drink the ice-cute water, or whatever, they all got sick, man.
We were so good all the whole time. That last day, we went, so, yes.
It was a terrific trip.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does that conclude?
That concludes the script.
Thank you. Finance is next.
We met on Tuesday, and unfortunately, for different reasons, our chairs are bad, so I'll pitch in front of them. So we had Catherine Cunnion from PARZ came and gave us an update on our, on our OPEB investment. And the good news is, it's growing. We, it actually is growing pretty good up until January. We actually had a 60% growth up in January, and then February, it took a little dive. But overall, from the, from the start of our investment, it's up two points, 70% from the start of the investment right now, at the date. So it's looking pretty good. The other interesting, good news that I heard in that was that PARZ is our representative, but their investment is through Vanguard, one of the Vanguard funds. And we use a balanced fund, which is kind of middle-of-the-road on risk, risk overtaking. And the fees that we charge are proportional, because there's an algorithm that goes along with how big the portfolio is at PARZ. And PARZ is, they started in business, I think she said, in 2015. So it's a fairly new company, it's growing quite rapidly. And that's good news for us, because as they grow, the basis points of the fees goes down. So we started at a basis point, the fees were a basis point seven. So already, they've grown enough, just in the time we've been with them, that our basis point for the fees is down to fifty-five basis points. And I asked where the bottom was, because we get a pre-basis point. That wasn't the case. It's gonna go down, it bottoms out at thirty basis points, so. But, and I think the way PARZ is growing, what they're doing, I think there's a good chance that we'll probably get there pretty quick. So that was good news as well, in respect to PARZ, so. Any questions on that, or any guys wanna add anything?
We have a hundred fifty-four thousand in there, right now, or end of March.
Right, yeah. So it's growing. And next year, we'll have a lot more.
And there's three booklets, if anyone wants a hard copy, of the full annual report of ours. You received it in a PDF, but if you want a hard copy, they're still over here.
So the, the, any more to... So, the, the, any more discussion? Okay. The next piece of business was with respect to the joint purchasing agreements for Berkshire Health Group. And what's happened there is there was a board representative for, I think, Berkshire Health Insurance Group, a different group?
Berkshire County.
Berkshire County Insurance Group, that was, that was also part of the Berkshire Health Group. And their representative is retiring, and that representative on the board worked for three of our member towns, Washington, Peru, and Windsor. And, so their representative is gone. They can't participate in Berkshire Health Group anymore unless they affiliate with another governmental unit. We happen to be a governmental unit, they're member towns, so they can actually ride on our representative on the board if we go through this joint purchasing agreement and they can continue to not disrupt their health plans, basically. And I think, you know, for our member towns, it's good for us to do this because, you know, one, they're our member towns, and we all help insurance companies, so it's not a big deal. But, the, you know, we raise some concerns with, with, that the board, our board representative could be, you know, they could be, we could be having to spend our resources on administering this plan for those guys that were representing on the board. And also, is our representative representing us or the towns? And in the agreement, it actually spells out that there, there really is no, no onus on our representative to supply them with anything or any of that issue. So, we feel like, and, and our area are also working on this agreement, so we feel like it's probably pretty clean in that respect. And it's in the document that we can get out and have what. So, if we feel like our resource is being used for that, for the towns and not for us, then we can get out of the agreement if we want. So, I think we, as a, as a committee, decided that we felt this, we go forward with proposing that, under the agreement with the three separate towns and be their representative on the board.
And that agreement is, is a 60/60, 60 or like that?
Yeah.
And it's just an example of one.
Yeah. So, I have to read the motions, so I want to make a motion here. We have three of them, actually, one for each town. So, I apologize if I've done that. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the agreement between Central Berkshire Regional School District and the Town of Washington for the purchase of health insurance benefits as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the joint health, joint health benefits purchasing agreement with the Town of Washington. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the agreement between Central Berkshire Regional School District and the Town of Peru for the purchase of health insurance benefits as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to establish a joint health benefits purchasing agreement for the Town of Peru. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District Committee approve the agreement between Central Berkshire Regional School District and the Town of Windsor for the purchase of health insurance benefits as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to establish a joint health benefits purchasing agreement with the Town of Windsor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
So, the other piece we have is, Melissa gave a third quarter financial report, and everything looks pretty good. There's no red flags or surprises, things are on track. I don't, you don't speak to it all, but...
So, revenues on track. We're in the third quarter, we should have about 75% of our revenues, and we do. We have 75% of the state aid, 75% of the town assessments, so it all falls in line. We're in good shape there. Expenses vary based upon the type of expense it is. For instance, if you have a full-year administrator, their, their expenses should be around 73% at this time of year for their salaries. School year would be closer to like 68%. And, and the teaching unit, because they are paid through the summer or in the summer, they're lower, they're more like at 57%. And the report shows, includes salaries and supplies for all of those instructional areas. So, we're, we're in good shape in all of those. There's some that are a little over due to maybe town movement within the year and they have to do transfers to move funds in to get those whole at the end of the year. And there's some that are under. And that's because we had carryover funding from grants that we were able to use. So, that money will, if we're under, will either be expensed in a different area that's over, or a moment to be in due. But it's, the financials for the operating budget are in good shape.
And one other piece is we have to approve a transfer of funds mainly due to a little extra snow we had in March to play with. So, each of the schools have a snow bill, so the money's being transferred out of the general public transportation fund. Make a motion here. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the FY18 third quarter transfer in the amount of $23,852 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the FY18 third quarter transfers. Is there any discussion?
See, I thought Mr. Rob and Mr. Cena did all the snow work for Wacona, so, did they get paid that much?
We had to call the, the true snow power back in.
I thought it was kind of quick.
Any more discussions, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate the mentioning. Okay, Paulson.
No report. We have a meeting scheduled for June 12th, and then the next week we'll have some policy changes to be added.
Move on to personnel.
All right, we're not going to take any action on the new category of position, perhaps, that will come in a subsequent meeting after we give it some more thought. And I will give a status update on what has happened in negotiations. I'm in the executive session, which could wait until the end of the meeting if that's what everybody would like.
I see I'm just going to wait.
That's the end of our report.
Thank you. Algie?
I'm ready to report.
Okay. As far as the Wacona building project, what you have before you is community nights that will be occurring in June, June 19th, at both Windsor and Wacona, 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM respectively. And that's, I believe, mostly to present options for the building and try to get a sense from the community, you know, what their desire for is. And then on Thursday, June 24th, the same, back to Washington and Kittredge at 5:00 and 7:00 again. Is there anything else to report?
The, yeah, the working group met today and reviewed all of the options, which today, I think, about 13 or so, so there's quite a few. And we talked about ways to narrow it down to about six, five to six, new construction and renovation. And we will be meeting again in June 14th, the working group, and then the full building committee, with, I believe, a decision on what to narrow it down to for six.
Okay, any questions? Superintendent's report and recommendations, we have that in your packet. So, we're basically nothing to report tonight except happy to share the newsletter. She did make some more remarks about the opening dates, and don't want to really talk to follow you up, but she's, she identified the opening dates and orientations and for staff as well. The next topic is the water dispensing in schools. Mr. Popper asked for that, and yet we don't.
So, in all of our schools, we've done an inventory of the, the adaption for water bottles in all of our schools. Here at Craneville, there are zero. They do, however, in all of their classrooms have the bubbler in their sinks, and that's what's used to fill the bottles. We looked at adapting a few of the sinks out in the hallways, but the project is very, very, much bigger than it, it needs to be. We have to open up the walls and the new pipes, things of that nature. So, that's on hold for the, the hallway. There's a new fountain in the teachers' room that is, was paid for by the PTO, donated by the PTO, and is a standalone unit for the teachers that they had requested. So, that's the status of Craneville. Kittredge has one out by the gym, and most likely will be adding a second. Beckett has none yet, but we are looking at two and hope to have those in by the fall. They also have sinks in their rooms, but not all of them have that bubbler where they can fit underneath. So, we should have a couple at Beckett, a couple at Kittredge by the fall. Craneville will remain as it is for now. Nessicus has seven, and Wacona has two. And the seven at Nessicus are located in the administration hallway, the gym hallway, and the cafeteria. And then there's four academic halls that we also have them in. So, Nessicus has the, has the most number of them, they were easily adaptable in that building. And Wacona has two, and they're attached to the joint fountain, it's in a lobby at the cafeteria.
And those are all, have filters, so the water is filtered, so the only one that really doesn't have the filtered water is in there.
Yes, and Beckett currently, but we're working on Beckett.
And Beckett, though, third better gets it.
Question. Here in Craneville, what's the difference between filling your bottle from the bubbler and from the faucet in the classrooms? Is there a water quality difference, or is it just, I mean, I've seen the sinks, I know...
It's the way they fit. So, if you, if you were doing it on a regular, typical regular sink, or one in the hallway, it would, the bottle wouldn't fit all the way in, so you couldn't fill it all the way.
Okay. I'm just thinking the sinks in the classrooms have the higher arch, which can fit the bottle. And if we're not able to get filtered water, they're just, I don't know, kind of important. Is there a way to put filters on the sinks in classrooms?
Yeah, that's...
I mean, like the small adaptable, you do at home.
Yeah. We can look at that, yes, definitely.
And that would alleviate, you know, the disparity between the whole schools. If you can't do one, you know, call Redder or something, or whoever does that, so, calling it in or something.
Yeah, the, the refrigerator units cool the water.
Right, but I mean, it's a filter underneath.
So, the water will still be at room temperature, but we could, we could, you know, be creative with the filtering, yeah.
Was the goal filter water, or the goal go to bottles because it's more hygienic and less germ transfer? But that's why you go to the water.
The initial was to go to being able to refill the bottles.
Yeah, because you did, because it was more easier to transfer germs and diseases with the drinking fountain as opposed to the bottle. So, if you make the water filter water, I mean, well, I don't know that you have to filter the water. I mean, it's a nice bonus, but I don't know that the water here is bad. I think it's pretty good with drinking water. I don't know, I have a well, so I don't know. It's probably much worse.
But, but to your point, there is a certain, I will say, my wife's a school nurse, so I, I hear from articles that she reads that having fountains that everybody, you know, just like when I was a kid, don't put your mouth on the phone, or else you get sick. You know, so that, that hasn't changed since 100 years ago when I was in school. So, you know, it wouldn't help, you know, if we could shut those down and only use the others. So, you know, I'm sure that there's a, a ton of, you know, material out there that would say that would be better, whether it's filtered or not, I don't know. I wouldn't think that that would be too expensive to put under each one.
No, and I'm just thinking the equality between the...
So, you've got to filter, one school, one, you should filter them all.
I would think it might, if it comes to the public's knowledge, might, awesome. And I think it's a good idea, too, to save them.
Okay, is there all for that topic? Okay, moving on. Second time you've seen us, the senior activities, they begin next week, so the seniors are with us until next Sunday. No recommendations, the superintendent has no personnel changes to note, and I'm not aware of any old business in terms of new businesses. Is there anything that a member would like to see in the next agenda? Anthony Bagby tonight, just starting out. We'll have it for the next, first meeting in June. So, closing an open session of our committee. Mr. Allen.
You know, I would just like to congratulate that young man who spoke to us. I know him with the programs that's run here at Craneville, and he was in our class for cooking for a couple of years, and he was a sister. And I know speaking is not his thing, you know, I imagine speaking in public was pretty scary for him. And I get to give him kudos because he came in and it was something that probably wasn't very easy for him to do. So, you know, congratulations to him to come here and, and say it, say it on TV, and say it to the whole town, all the towns. Congratulations to him.
Anything else? Okay, we move on to the final topic, going through the session.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session 8:05 PM. In accordance with MGL chapter 38, section 21, 83, discuss strategy...